The meeting will come to order, regular meeting of the Board of Education, District 208, August 13th.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Durkheim?
Here.
Yes, from here.
Here.
Melvin.
Here.
Jevon Horace.
Here.
Here.
We do have a public hearing concerning working cash bonds for our capital projects, having a quorum. That's our first order of business. We are looking for public comment on the proposal to sell bonds in the amount not to exceed $2,050,000 for the purposes of increasing the working cash fund of the district. All persons desiring to be heard have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony. Dr. Skinkis and Dr. Smetana, would you present and explain the reasons for this proposal tonight?
The board has received on two occasions now presentations, one from Elizabeth Hennessy, one from Dr. Smetana and myself, explaining that we have the reserve funds in our working cash fund in order to do the solar project and the culinary lab, but it does make sense to do the working cash bond. It will continue to provide taxpayers a tax decrease over the next five years. It will provide a step-down model so that the taxes continue to decrease over the next five years without tapping into the district's working cash fund. Again, these are limited to capital projects. These cannot be used for operating expenditures, so that is a prerequisite of the bonds. Dr. Smetana, do you have anything else you would like to add?
We did, as you said, Dr. Skinkis, have two presentations on this, including from Ms. Hennessy. Were there any questions from board members? I didn't see any submitted, any for discussion this evening. Okay, and again, this is not a vote. This is the public hearing as required under law. Do we have any members of the public who wish to comment on the working cash bonds? So if we could, can we motion to adjourn the public hearing portion?
Does that need to go through that or no?
I can read it if you'd like. All persons desiring to be heard have been given an opportunity to present oral and written testimony with respect to the proposed issuance of working cash fund bonds. Now can we get a motion to adjourn?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, moves that the August 13, 2024, public hearing concerning working cash fund bonds for capital projects be adjourned.
Second. We have a second from Ms. Locke, and we do need a roll call, please.
Mr. Durkheim?
Yes.
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 Yes. Dr. Freitas, do we have recognitions as early in the year?
We do not have recognition at this moment, Madam President.
Okay, thank you very much. Reports, I just want to say very quickly, on behalf of the Board of Education, welcome to the 24-25 school year. This is my first time in some time not having any students enrolled here at RV, but the excitement is here, and our sincere thank you to the faculty, the administration, and of course, the students for what shows to be a very promising 24-25 school year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
This is superintendent's report.
Okay. Superintendent's report for August 13, 2024. The district has begun to receive proposals for the solar panel project. Dr. Smetana will provide a summary report and recommendation to the Board of Education at the September 10 meeting. That is our preliminary goal. Tonight, Dr. Smetana will also provide an update on the FY '25 budget, which has been updated with the June 30 actuals. Remember, we were unable to provide the June 30 actuals at the July meeting due to the timing of 4th of July and the Township Treasurer's Office closing out our end-of-the-year financials. So you'll get some of the June 30 information tonight in Dr. Smetana's report as well as the August report. Construction on the culinary lab is progressing nicely. The district's construction manager is here tonight and will provide a project update later this evening. The 24-25 SMART goals are on the agenda for discussion tonight. Now that the school year has officially started, I'm looking for the Board of Education to provide feedback so the goals can be finalized and work can commence with the administrative staff as well as the building staff. As far as advisory councils are concerned, there was one advisory council meeting on Monday, July 29. A more detailed update will be provided later in the agenda. To be noted, there are no significant changes. Most of these were just, a lot of them were updates to footnotes and legal references and the dates. I think we had one policy where we updated to say superintendent or designee. Other than that, we accepted all IASB recommendations.
Did that answer my questions?
Yeah.
I didn't think there was anything too big, but okay. Thank you.
And I think an important point of clarification also is that what just passed last spring is, in many cases, not yet in that press plus packet.
We'll get that in August, in September.
Okay, so that's still, there's probably a larger packet.
Okay. There was one other update I needed to provide under other. House Bill 0305 did pass and was signed by the governor. So what this does is, in regards to the remaining Township Treasurer's Offices, it clarifies how school districts can remove themselves from a Township Treasurer's Office if they'd like to. Also, it amends the rules so that the Township Treasurer's directing boards are actually made up of representatives from each of the districts the Township Treasurer's Office is serving. So we are a part of the proviso Township Treasurer's Office. Dr. Smetana has worked with them now for, this is her fifth year in her position? Or sixth year? Sixth year in her position, so she's been working with them. She feels that we do have a strong relationship with the Township Office. I'll let you speak to the normal functions that you work with, with the Township Office. If you could just give a short background.
Sure, so the Township Treasurer, we run, there's a lot of checks and balances that are in place for the Township Treasurer and with my office. And so we run half of payroll and then they process the rest of payroll as a check and balance. They also cut all of our checks after the board approves them, which is another check and balance. They do a lot of the taxes for us and they do, one of the many benefits of the Township Treasurer is, for example, our financial software. We're able to share that cost among all the member districts, which is savings to the district. And then they provide training for us, often at no cost. So there's a lot of benefits of being able to pool our resources with other districts to do things of that nature as well.
Pool our resources in regards to all of our tax collections as well and investments, which is how we've been able to earn some additional interest on our money.
I was actually just going to add that they also handle the investment process on our behalf. I'm wondering with the new legislation, I mean, obviously, they've been transparent to you in the past. You've worked with them regularly, and I know we've talked about their investment estimates have sometimes been very conservative. We saw that again, I think, this year. Is there a way for us to incorporate in your report some type of an update quarterly on where those investments are trending from their consultant's perspective as opposed to actual dollars?
Yes, I usually get a quarterly report from them now, even not having a representative on the board after their board meetings, so I can report out and share that in my reports.
I think that'd be helpful just to include in the board packet, not asking you to reinvent the way, but just to include the report you get on investment income, because it is such an area we've seen fluctuation on.
So the last point I wanted to touch on with the board is, so with this new legislation, school district, each school district that's represented at the Treasurer's Office can have a representative on the directing board. The two options are, it could be one of your school board members, or it could be an administrator appointed by the Board of Education. Just four meetings a year. They're held during the school day. I think Dr. Smetana works very closely with the administration. Her and I have talked about the possibility of me recommending tonight that I think it's a good idea that maybe just Dr. Smetana serves as District 208's representative on the proviso board. However, if this board feels like, no, we want to have a school board member on there, that's fine. It's just, you would need to figure, we need to figure out a process if someone wanted to volunteer or attend those extra four meetings.
I think we need to make an actual appointment of Dr. Smetana.
Yes, that won't happen today.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell you what I was, where I was getting towards and get your feeling. If that's the, I will work with council and to get the resolution so that we can appoint an administrator, if that's okay with the board, but I wanted to show my hand today of what I was thinking.
Well, let's, look into the discussion.
Is there some, it sounds like you're already familiar with the operation. Is there some job description in terms of that representative, just so that we have a sense of what these quarterly meetings look like?
Legislation is probably the best place.
I could send out a copy of the legislation.
The legislation, sure.
The actual legislation.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, there'll be, how many? Fifteen representatives on the board? I don't know how many, fifteen or seventeen districts that are going to proviso township? Or is it not that many?
I think it's a little less. I'm trying to remember from the last time we got to the board. Somewhere around there, most.
Have you heard from other schools what, where they're leaning?
I can call around if the board prefers.
Not that it impacts our decision, but just. Just to understand the standard, what the landscape's going to look like. Any questions here?
No.
I mean, my suggestion is that you would share the legislation and do as Ms. Locke requested, and then have the resolution scheduled to go for our next meeting. I mean, I believe that Dr. Smetana is the most qualified person. Okay.
And that concludes my report.
A quick question. That email that you sent regarding this, I must have misread it, but I didn't realize that there was the option of administrator or board member. I really, as I read through it, I thought it was just a board member, so.
You can appoint, I have, we have a meeting set up, I believe, next week with the actual township treasurer.
Okay.
So I'll get clarification on all of that. But the way I read that was administrator or board member. But I think there has to be a resolution from the board.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
I was going to try to read that quickly, and I won't do it now, but it's a good point. Thank you. Dr. Smetana, your report?
Good evening. Tonight, I have two financial reports for the board. One is from last fiscal year. As Dr. Skinkis said, I was unable to provide this back in July due to the timing of the holidays, so I'll first report out on last fiscal year. So looking at the June 2024 monthly summary report, the total operating revenue for the month was $721,422, with 38% coming from our state funding, which is evidence-based funding, 29% from federal and state reimbursement, and then 20% from local revenue. And the total operating expenditures for the month were $2,739,372, with 65% towards salary and benefits, 12% for special education tuition, and then 9% for purchase services. The monthly financial statements kind of show where we ended for the fiscal year. So the fund balance sheet shows that the district finished the fiscal year with a surplus of $1,143,170. This surplus was due to receiving additional revenue. So we, you'll see on the next page, which I'll get to in a minute, but we were, we were over budgeted in our revenue. So we received, as the sale has pointed out before, additional revenue from interest on investment by an extra $600,000 that we were not expecting. Food service reimbursement of $80,000. So that is food service reimbursement from our satellite schools. We also did receive extra money from commission that we were not counting on, both from our partner schools as well as adding the coffee bar. We received additional money from state funding, evidence-based funding, the $80,000 was due to back payment from past years, so we were unable to budget for that. Age group gymnastics came in higher as well, and then there were a couple of my ends that came in, like $50,000 over what we had budgeted for. So that's where we get the additional $1 million is, we were almost at 102.5% of our budgeted revenue for the year. So the operating fund balance as a percent of operating fund expenditures without the $2 million set aside in working cash is 62.69% is where we finished the fiscal year, which means the district could operate for seven and a half months without receiving any additional revenue. You know, I always recommend that we have at least six months on hand, as we saw with COVID and some other past experiences in the most recent years with property taxes and things of that nature. It's always good to be able to operate for six months. On the next page, I told you, as it showed, the summary of revenues for the district, we received more than we had budgeted in terms of revenue, so we certainly did better than the previous fiscal year. And then on the next page, the summary of expenditures shows that the district for last fiscal year spent 99.84% of what we had budgeted. So had our revenues not unexpectedly come in so significantly over budget, we would have been right where we were projecting the budget to be, which was a surplus of $270,000 for the year.
So I'm looking on this, and I think I lost it. Last year at this time, we had only received 96%, and this year we're at 102%. Is that the number that's in my head still?
For revenues?
Yeah.
It was 99.95%.
Okay.
So last year.
Is that the property tax delay?
The previous, so in fiscal year '23, we almost hit our budget exactly because we had almost 100% of revenues and almost 100% of expenditures. This past fiscal year, fiscal year '24, we did great with expenditures. We were at, you know, 99.8%. It's the revenue that came in much higher, because I was explaining primarily due to the interest on investment, as you have touched on previously.
I was just struck by the fluctuation of a couple of percentage points is meaningful, right?
And we did get some property tax come in in May, even though we weren't sure whether or not it was going to come in, which also helped with our revenue picture.
I know this is a part of your budget presentation, so the board, just make note about, we finished June 30 of '24 with a $1 million surplus, but when we go through the budget, you'll see there's a projected deficit, but the million that we were over this year should help cover that. Okay?
Moving on. So looking at my normal standard report for this past month, for July '24, which is our new fiscal year, you can see the monthly summary report. The operating revenue for the month was $5,102,424, with 86% coming from CBPRT and local property tax, majority is property tax on that one, 5% coming from interest on investment, and 4% coming from federal and state reimbursement. The total expenditures for the month were $3,918,159, with 44% towards salary and benefits, 42% towards operation and maintenance. So we received a discount by paying for Airmark in full for the entire year in July, and Airmark is our company for service for our operations and maintenance. So that's why there's such a high percentage in that area, and then 6% for purchase services. In our monthly financial statements, you can see when we're looking at the summary of revenues that we've received 14% of our budgeted revenue for this year, and this amount is higher than last fiscal year at 2.78, and that's just timing of property tax. And then the summary of revenue shows that the district has spent 10.75% of the budgeted expenditures for the year, and this amount's similar to this time we had last year. And then, as always, for this past month, I included a statement of revenue and expenditures for our board accounts as well as our activity accounts. And then I have a few other additional items, but any questions on those reports before I move on? So then I also included the paid facility rentals for fourth quarter, which is looking at April 1st through June 30th. And these, again, these are just what we received for paid, not necessarily what we rented out. So this past quarter, the district collected $28,704.14 in revenue and expended $8,879.50 of the revenue for this quarter. 44% came from charges for facilities, and the majority of those facilities were field house, followed by the auditorium. We had some dance groups rent the auditorium this year. So year-to-date, we've collected $96,000 roughly, and we've expended $24,273. And then the surplus is used for offsetting cost-related keeps of facilities, so we're doing the gym floor, things of that nature. And there was a question submitted about whether or not we had returned to pre-pandemic levels for rentals. And yes, our revenue for rentals typically ranges pre-pandemic levels anywhere from $93,000 to 108 is our highest we've ever had, and that really just depends on what rentals we get, you know, we have come through, and that can vary a little bit from year to year. And then disposal of the district properties, wanted to update the board. I believe back in December, we had voted to dispose of the special education minibus that was purchased in 2009. I was able to get $1,200 for it. And it doesn't seem like a whole lot, but when I contacted some of the biggest companies, you know, one company kind of laughed at me and said like, no, that bus is too old. We don't even want it for parts. So I was able to get $1,200 for it. So I wanted to update the board on that. And then, as Dr. Skinkis mentioned, tomorrow, myself, Nania, Airmark, and Nicholas are meeting to review the solar panel projects. We did get eight proposals that were submitted, which is a great turnout, and Nania has already ranked them using the criteria that we outlined in the RFP, so we'll go over that in detail tomorrow and see if, you know, we agree with where their kind of Excel spreadsheet ranked them using the criteria. And then we will pick the top candidate and start trying to negotiate contract terms with them and with our legal counsel so that we can present that to the board. It looks like in looking at the top two proposals, the cost will probably be around 1.2 million. And one thing that came through in looking through the proposals is there is an additional incentive that just got passed through Cook County. That's for Cook County only, so it's an extra 10%. And so instead of it taking almost seven years to recover our money, it'll now be about five and a half, is what both of, what I've seen in a couple of the proposals. So I feel pretty confident that that's what will occur with the company that we select. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Any questions or comments from anyone? Very busy summer.
Yes.
Very busy fall ahead. Thank you. Dr. Freitas.
Good evening, our board members. Before I present, I would like to introduce our newest student advisor to the Board of Education. To my left, you'll see Olivia Lopez, and next to her is Emma Lopez. Those are two new student board members.
Welcome.
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 So our future board members will pause, and we'll see if you have any questions or comments. I know you met with some of the board members beforehand and got the lay of the land, so thank you to those who did that. But if you ever want to get my attention, feel free to, I'm not looking, someone will interrupt. So thank you very much for committing your time. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. I said it before, but as they're being officially introduced, we had seven or eight candidates that we had interviewed, and they were all amazing, and these two have demonstrated that they care and want to be here to serve, so I'm excited to incorporate them in the fold and hear what they have to say as we go.
Great, thank you.
All right. Beginning my principal's report, today was the first day of school. Thank you to our superintendent, thank you to the board, to all the staff, cafeteria workers, maintenance, security, all the teachers, everybody. Today was a fantastic day, one of many. Students were smiling, they were excited, excited to see their friends and their new teachers, and just an overall fantastic day. Yesterday, sports began. I mean, you see all of our fields and locker rooms packed with our bull dogs, so we're excited to begin the 24-25 school years and have another exemplary year. In the month of August, we actually concluded our first parent university welcome back night, where we presented topics on school eG, Google Classroom, school safety and protocols, and general operations information. I'd like to thank Assistant Principal Mr. Dave Mannan, and our Division Head for STEM is Lindsay Minow, who supported in that parent series. And a parent series is a partnership between admin, staff, and community members to educate everyone. Future series and nights are to include early college credit opportunities, curriculum night, course selection night, community resources, and social media. So those are topics that we'll be hosting parent series on this semester. Open house opens, begins August 21st from 6:00 to 7:30. That's an opportunity for parents to see the students, teachers, and to follow their schedule. It's from 6:00 to 7:30 throughout the building. On August 29th, we have the countdown to college night for seniors and parents from 6:00 to 7:30 in the auditorium. In September, September 2nd is Labor Day. It is a non-attendance day. As I just mentioned, we just began our first official sports and tryouts, began on Monday, and I'm excited that we welcome a new Assistant Principal for athletics, Mr. Phil Torres. He's definitely off and running, and you know, just a small sample of his work, you know, because of his leadership. We're moving to add a fifth level volleyball. That's kind of part of the conference. It's a need, more student opportunity, so I'm glad we hired him. I'm really excited for Mr. Torres and our athletics this year. September's coming around the corner, and 13th is our homecoming game. Our new, our previous MSC rival, now we're going to be upstate rivals. We're playing Ridgewood at the Canely Athletic Conflicts at 7:00 p.m., and then we have our homecoming dance in the field the following day from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. And that concludes my principal's report.
Great, thank you. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from anyone? Let's move on. We have Nicholas here for their presentation to talk about some of the items that were referenced earlier.
Dr. Smetana, did the introductions. Joe, Jeff, you want to come to the table, please?
Sure, so back in June, when the board approved the bids, we didn't have the opportunity for Nicholas and Associates to come and present the bids and kind of give a scope of the project as well as outline costs associated with it. So we'll do that tonight as well as provide an update on where we are in the project.
Sure. Good evening, board. I'm Joe Poppenicholas. Is this on? We're good. With Nicholas and Associates, Vice President, Jeff Weber, Project Manager for the 2025 or 2024 Food Lab Project is here as well. I'll start with, let's go, let's start at the beginning, sort of the bidding process. Leading up to the bidding process, we established a final control estimate. That final control estimate was around 1.9 million. As you can see behind me, we have a bid tab. There were 12 prime bids that we received on June 18th. It was very competitive, came in at 1.6, so very favorable to the district. At that point in time, after the bid tab is reviewed thoroughly, we'll perform scope reviews for all the apparent low bidders. So if we go to the next document. So we have four bid packages. We had general trades, plumbing, HVAC, and electrical. So I do a thorough scope review with each of them to ensure that they understand the project intent, design intent, to confirm that they do have all plans and specifications taken into consideration within their bid. So upon receiving those confirmations, I drafted a letter of recommendation, as you see here. It's important to note, within the bid packages, we did build in some specified allowances to accommodate unforeseen conditions or potential district added enhancements. So that was approximately around $100,000 to accommodate such conditions, so. Keep scrolling down here. This is the construction management at risk, CMV structure for both the 2024 Food Lab renovation project and solar project as well. I won't get into the details, but I will, I'll go through each line item here. So pre-construction activities, so anything that takes place prior to the bid opening or prior to the construction phase commencement, there's no charge for that. CMV at risk, so at risk basically says that all the prime contractors get awarded over to Nicholas and are responsible for those contractors. So we put up a payment and performance bond for 100% of the project, and we hold all contracts. So whatever may happen with any prime or sub of a prime, at the end of the day, from a district standpoint, it's Nicholas. Okay? So that's what at risk means. Payment and performance bond premium, that's 1% of cost to construction, so that's 1% of the 1,606,412. And then we get into fixed general conditions. So fixed general conditions are mainly a product of construction phase duration. So in this case, we have approximately three to four months, July to October, so substantial completion is projected to be in October this year, and that's for senior project manager. There's no charge. Project management, so Jeff's time, onsite full-time superintendent, general superintendent, safety checks. Tony Rossi, he's not here tonight, so he's client advocate slash quality assurance. He has many titles. He's also our drone operator, but we're not flying drones in the school. So he does all sorts of things. So he's a great, he's a great resource for the district, just another set of eyes and ears at the table. So yeah, he's doing a great job, as well as Jeff. So that's total fixed general conditions. That's the 1,46,400. So between CMV and fixed general conditions, that's 2,34,753. And as far as the billing cycle, it's just spread evenly. And as far as the billing cycle, it's just spread evenly throughout the construction phase, nice and simple. On page two of the CMV structure, we have reimbursable general conditions. So one of the line items is insurance. So our general liability insurance premium is identified there. It's 0.69% of the cost of construction. And then we have reimbursable general condition placeholders. So we like to create these placeholders within our fee structure in lieu of just putting them in a bid scope of work. A good example is dumpsters. We could simply just say within all the big scopes of work that each contractor is responsible for their own disposal, including dumpsters. But if they were to figure, let's just say 10 dumpsters, and they use five, they're just going to retain the balance of the value that they figured, and that's not a good scenario for the district. So we carve things out like that, and then we'll control that, and then we only build the district for actuals that are used. And then anything that's unused just gets retained by the district. And same with fixed general conditions. If we were to complete the project next week, nice and early, any unused fixed general conditions, district retains as well, so. I just said I wasn't going to get into the details, I just did, but that's the CMV structure.
No, it's good to hear it from you guys directly, so that's helpful. Thank you. We've absolutely read through the documents in the last couple of board meetings, but having this interaction is helpful.
So that, once all that's complete and in place, and previously the Board of Education assigned these contractors over to Nicholas, we then start with the construction phase. And Jeff's here with us tonight, and Jeff could provide a little high-level update, kind of what we've been doing the last month or so since we started.
My directive was to hit the ground running. So the basic push was to get all of the invasive and loud, dusty portions of the project completed as fast as possible, primarily before the students arrived, which we did. Tore on all the flooring, got all of our underground plumbing done, inspected, and then poured back, which was a big concern. There's a lot of concrete going on in there. But in addition to that, we also have all of our structural steels installed, welded in place and done. All of our roof penetrations are done and flashed in already and capped, waiting for our RTU to arrive, which should be, it's scheduled to be arriving October 1st. All of our framing, for the most part, has been installed. Plumbing, above-ground plumbing is done. Insulation on the plumbing is 75% done. All of our door frames are set. Masonry started today. I'm expecting about another week for rough electrical, and then we're going to start closing up walls. So our intent is to be as tight of a package as possible without intruding into your space, which I think, I mean, I haven't, I realize today's the first day of school, but so far so good, so.
So far so good.
Yeah, so.
So you'll be occupying that hallway until the project's completed?
We'll be occupying that hallway until we've got most of our, like, the masons and some of our material pushed back in, and then we're going to try and tighten up our tent so that you can continue to use your space. But for right now, yeah, we're occupying that area.
The intent was to use that area for staging. As one of the board members that went for the quick walkthrough, that's where the extra duck were, plumbing materials, lock boxes. Once we can get where they're mostly just in that room and all those door frames are secured and honed, then we're just going to do a small temporary fence in front of those doors so that we can open up that hallway.
I just think as students, and we talked about this a little bit earlier, finding their way to class on day one, they're going to have to find a new path in a few months. That's true.
One of our main tasks for this project was the rooftop unit. So we did a pre-purchase, we call it. It's not a true pre-purchase, but we were able to get the RTU procurement process underway before going out to bid. There was a basis of design. We knew that would be the longest lead time, and as you heard from Jeff, right now, we're looking at October 1st. So we're in this position because we're, the team collectively was proactive in making sure that that mechanical equipment was ordered as soon as possible, so.
That being said, we also have all the exhaust fans onsite already, so some of our big items are here.
What about any of the culinary equipment, any updates on any of that? Not at this time.
Not at this time. I don't have, we don't have any of that onsite yet, no.
Okay. Okay.
Any questions, comments from those who were on the tour?
Look great. Look forward to seeing the finish, and keep up the good work.
Great.
Thank you.
Jeff, Joe, thank you very much for coming in tonight. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Jeff, all right, will you be on the project? Is Jeff working with you or Tony working with you tomorrow on the solar panel reviews with Nania?
Tony will be here. Okay, so.
I'll be onsite for construction.
Meeting, okay. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Joe.
So our error, student advisors for the 24, 25 year are here, and we forgot to call them up. Do you guys want to come on up right now?
Student Association.
Student Association, I apologize. Student advisors, we did introduce. Student Association, we did not. I apologize, ladies.
We got an early homecoming day. We got to give you, that's why you needed this meeting.
Get things up and running quick this year. Good evening, thank you for having us. We just wanted to kind of start off by introducing ourselves. We are your 2024, 25 Executive Board. Student Association, my name is Lucy Trent, I'm going to be the president this year. I'm involved in soccer, golf, SA, NHS, and AST. I'm most forward, or looking most forward to my anatomy classes here. Yeah, I think it's our best win. I am vice president, and some things that I'm involved in are SA, soccer, NHS, and helping cause. The class I'm most looking forward to is AP Bio.
Hi, I'm Samantha Gibbs. I'm also a senior. I am the treasurer for the exec board. I'm involved in SA, NHS, lacrosse, and AST. I'm most looking forward to being a key leader.
My name is Ella Capulero. I'm also a senior, and I'm the student spokesperson. I'm involved in NHS, SA, as well as lacrosse, and I'm most looking forward to my chemistry class.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Klein. I'm going to be senior, and I'm the Director of Communications for exec board. I'm involved in lacrosse, NHS, and SA, and I'm really looking forward to my yearbook class this year.
The only member not with us is Ella Caputo. She's going to be our secretary this year, and we're an all-senior board, so.
And you're clearly busy.
Yeah. Looking forward to the school year. We have a lot of new things planned as well as our usual activities. Our big focus in this upcoming year, I would say our big goal, is to really increase student involvement in our events and activities, student and staff. We're hoping to get a lot of clubs, sports, and even classes involved in our different food drives, blood drives, even like spirit weeks, spirit days, just to kind of raise school spirit and participation, which we found last year was a little low. So that's our main goal this year, is to just really get everybody excited to be a part of our year.
We just had freshman orientation last Thursday, and it went really well overall. Student Association had over 60 volunteer leaders, and we had a bunch of staff involved as well to help make it a smooth process. We loved the drum line outside, that was right on the other side of the bulldog that the freshmen walked in, the big blow-up one. And we loved all the enthusiasm and encouragement shown by our leaders when they were working with the new freshmen, and we thought the freshmen opened up well this year.
You could tell the board what happened on freshman orientation.
Yeah, we had to bring that up. There was some fire drills a little bit.
We were welding some steel, and we had a fire drill.
We worked this piece out before the whole student body came back.
It's a good day to be a freshman and get that experience.
Yeah, it's a really lovely experience, yeah.
But yeah, our leaders were very flexible, and they were very quick to react to bringing the students out, just making sure that they were doing that without hesitation. That went really well. And then we went right back into the program once we were let back in. So yeah, overall, it was very positive, and I think a very fun day for both the freshman and leaders.
Just checking, but Mr. Earl Baum had nothing to do with this one?
No, Earl Baum did not.
Obviously, like Dr. Skink has said, homecoming is right around the corner. It's pretty early this year. The dance is on September 14th from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, and then the week prior is our spirit week. Tomorrow's our first SA meeting, so we'll be discussing and voting on a theme. And that, and then we have three committees that we are asking the people that are joining our club to join, which are pep rallies, spirit week, and decorations. And basically, they just help us plan this big event that we're all looking forward to.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I thought your intros were, I don't have any questions. I'll look to my colleagues here. But you guys did a good job summarizing your activities and your un-all senior class, which is unusual for SA.
Very, yes.
And you picked the early homecoming date because it started during COVID, right? But the students prefer.
Yeah, so we only have four home games this year.
But also, you guys prefer the outsourced, right? That was a big student preference?
Yes.
Okay, maybe one of you can explain what that is with the board, or?
Yeah, so with the homecoming being outside, I think not only was it just a bigger space in general, which makes it more comfortable for students, but you were kind of able to, you know, those who didn't want to be near the DJ and kind of the area where everybody's dancing had the opportunity to kind of walk around the track and relax with their friends. And those who made, I think it kind of more people, I think, could enjoy homecoming rather than just the ones who kind of wanted to be in the party area.
And the weather will be better.
Right, and the weather will be better.
You had a good streak.
Let's just pretend we're just moving forward.
Especially the last few years. I know our freshmen sophomore year we had some issues with like tech and all that, but I think the last few years of homecoming.
Laser show and all that, right?
Pretty good, yeah.
If the weather is bad, can you go inside?
That is, they have a backup plan.
We will continue the party, of course, for our bulldogs.
There is a backup plan.
There's a backup.
Ladies, great job. We're looking forward to working with you and hearing your monthly reports to the board, okay?
Thank you. We'll make sure you're properly on your agenda next time. Thanks. FOIA requests, I think we had a couple of FOIA requests?
Three FOIA requests. I included the responses as well as the summary chart in the board packet in regards to enrollment numbers and some general questions we're submitted. Most of those are available, if not all, on our website under the agendas and minutes, and then Smart Pure Cure, which we see these on a kind of a quarterly basis, looking for contact information, position, title, direct phone number, et cetera. Those are your FOIA requests over the last month.
Since our last meeting. Okay, thank you. District goals update. Do you want to talk us through where we are? Because I think we want to move forward as a board with these tonight.
So the board has seen these now for a couple of months, but we've had some, you know, between everybody's summer plans, we've had to work through going through these and finalizing these. So these goals were established, the general Board of Education goals, which are at the top of the chart, were established over the last few years. We've had a couple, we had some community participation meetings, we had a Saturday workshop, and the board finalized those and established those, I believe, two or three years ago, after we did the mission statement. And the next project that we've started then was doing annual SMART goals. So tonight, the board is looking at the annual SMART goals. And what we try to do is have the administration from superintendent all the way through the building administration identify SMART goals for each of the board goals, and then a couple action steps that are completed throughout the year. And we'll report out on these, or they're available to the board on a monthly basis. And so, again, we're looking for feedback from the board, or if the board would like something mentioned or changed or edited. But we, these are the SMART goals for the 24, 25 school year. The blue goal, we just have these color-coded, so there's no, but it aligns to the, I would say, academic platform. And so the SMART goal for this year is to transition from the SAT to the ACT for all academic benchmarks and growth goals, and utilize MTSS structure to analyze academic data via the Panorama dashboard to identify and respond to achievement gaps in order to provide students with appropriate resources and opportunities based on their post-secondary plans. So let me put that in layman's for you. We've been doing SAT for seven years. We're transitioning now back to the ACT. So that is going to be a huge undertaking. A lot of our curriculum intervention courses have been geared towards the SAT. It's a totally different type of test, so now we're going to be shifting back to the ACT. MTSS, you've heard a couple of presentations from Ms. Augustine, Ms. Pushba Winbush, and Ms. Kylie Linquist, that's multiple-tiered systems of support. And so they're going to be looking at how we are grabbing student data and looking at how we can start to close the growth goals and achievement gap goals in regards to academics. If you remember the Panorama, when we did the first SMART goal was purchasing a Panorama dashboard or software system that could collect both SEL, socio-emotional data, as well as academic data, so that we have a dashboard for all of our students. And then we could work those through our intervention services. So the goal for this year is to really use those tiered systems of support to look at how we can close the academic gaps, as well as getting students ready to transition from SAT to ACT and improve our ACT scores and some of our achievement gaps in our different demographic populations. So that is the SMART goal, and then the action steps are listed below. If there's specific questions, Dr. Freitas and myself will do the best we can to answer those.
Will you be looking at PSAT scores in identifying the students with potential deficiencies?
Yeah, so right now, when they, we're in that transition, right? The ACT, we're going to give it through grades nine through 11. And then a junior class, we're actually going to give them, you know, the practice ASAT. So we're in transition as we speak, so we will be using multiple scores, yes.
Yes, we'll use the PSAT that we use to place them in their freshman classes, but we're also going to give a practice ACT in a practice set of tests in the fall, so that we have some ACT data to compare to.
No, no, right, but like, so the current junior class took the PSAT last year?
Correct.
How are those PSAT scores being integrated into these SMART goals for this year?
So we're gonna, we're looking at those scores, right? And we place kids, replacing interventions. I mean, we bring, we put kids in, we pull kids out. But again, so we're going to look at those, and we're going to look at the ACT. So we're kind of in that, in that transition phase, I mean.
Okay, I don't know if I'm explaining right. So I looked at my child's PSAT scores.
Gotcha, yes, yes, yeah.
They do not match his GPA.
Sure.
What is being done to ensure, what's being done for this year's junior class to ensure that they receive all of the supports needed to transition to the ACT based on PS? So I know they're two different tests, however, I would ima, and I haven't done this in a while, but I would imagine that there's a, like a, if you scored this much on the PSAT, we predict that this is what you score on the ACT.
Gotcha, like a correlation, yes, gotcha. Yeah, there are all those tables.
Because the achievement gap should show up whether you use the SAT or the ACT. So how are we going to capitalize on the PSAT scores to ensure that this junior class doesn't suffer any, so that they're being properly supported?
Yeah. So, you know, tier one level, I'll say, there's many teachers that have been done and been doing it for years, you know, practice problems, right? So they embedded in the curriculum. So many juniors are going to get that tier one, right? Entire class kind of practice sample because it's built in in the curriculum as well. And then there's some, we're going to tap into some juniors as well, you know, to get extra support. But that's also that grade 11 is also an area where we need to relook and consider possible more intervention. We've been building it, right? We have the intervention for the ninth grade, for the ninth reading, right? We have, we also have CAP, the College Advanced Placement, so juniors are able to take kind of like a test prep course, so to speak, you know?
So the students that had the, that were, maybe you or Dr. Smetani can speak this, there's another classification of juniors that were placed in the CAP class. So there's in-class is level one, which is the in-class practice and strategies, and level two would be the CAP class. And then there's also, there'll be opportunities for additional test prep appearance and students who want to sign.
That's right. We've done, we've had teachers leave Saturday sessions, you know, during breaks and stuff. So we, there'll be those opportunities to continue to support.
And they're taking the practice test, just like they did the practice test by the SAT, but it'll be the practice ACT in the fall. And you'll get the scores pretty quickly?
Yep, yep, fairly quick, yeah.
But I mean, to clarify, like, we do not, we don't take our math classes and English classes and say, hey, we're forfeiting the curriculum and just strictly doing SAT prep.
No, 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 no.
So I don't, I don't want to make.
No, yeah, please don't teach.
But they do do dedicate, yeah.
Please teach, please don't teach the test.
But they do do dedicated, weekly, like, practice problems and testing strategies in the math and English classes.
I'm looking at the fourth action, or the last action step, utilize department PLC time to continuously analyze relevant student performance and data. I just want to make sure that the PSAT, which is, it's like, these students have been taking SAT-style tests since they were in like seven, I don't even remember when, right? They started, they're tested to that. And like, this is their, this was their year to demonstrate, right? And now we're switching, however.
But it's a statewide.
The state is switching.
It's statewide. Okay. It's statewide, okay, the state is switching.
So every student across the state is facing this.
I'm concerned about our students, and I want to make sure that we, as a district, because we have the ability to influence our data and to influence our students' achievement, I want to make sure we are looking at PSAT data as part of the goal.
Yeah, we're not, we're not forgetting about it, like I said, it is part of our academic goal, but we are in transition, but we do have, yeah.
And this, this doesn't quite answer your question, but also from the budget standpoint, we are providing not only a practice test for all the students on ACT, but we're also providing the juniors an opportunity to take the SAT in the spring, and this, the district is paying for that, because they have been preparing all along for the SAT, we don't want to pull the rug out from underneath that, so they will also be able to take an SAT during the day.
So they can then potentially submit whichever score they choose.
So they will have an SAT and ACT score.
But most schools are going test optional anyway.
Yes, but they've been preparing for an SAT for two years.
But for scholarships and things like that, they do often need to have a test score.
But we just decided that our.
And for college level placement, once you've got, so yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
We brought, we discussed it at our first admin meeting on August 6th, and Ms. Linquist and Dr. Freitas recommend, you know, asked Dr. Smetanik and myself, could we do another, so we're going to cover the cost of the SAT, so that, like you just mentioned, kids have been preparing for the SAT for all this time.
Will it be done during the day?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yep.
As you said, it will be optional if they want to take SAT.
We'll be, we'll be having all juniors take it.
We'll have all juniors take it.
Take both, after the ACT sometime in the spring.
So then all the more reason to look at PSAT data, you guys just, okay, proved it, that all the more reason why we need to look at the PSAT data to identify the achievement gap, because I can only speak for one student, but let me tell you, I'm concerned.
I would say that you're, I would say you're speaking for the general synopses, there was a decline across the board. Now, we're not sure, some of the talk in the curriculum circles is because this was the first year of the digital test.
Digital, oh.
So there's been, there's been some consistent reporting across high schools that SAT scores appeared to be down from last spring.
Okay, interesting.
So. Many factors, right.
There's always going to be factors, I just want to make sure the equity gap or the achievement gap doesn't get larger.
So it sounds like your question is, are we using every possible tool available?
Yes, I just want to be sure.
When we did the opening institute as well, the focus to the staff was this MTSS academic goal of like, we need to start really looking at our, like, and this is what I've prepared the board for, for the last two years, and we've talked about my goals, and like, we really need to start honing in on the achievement gap and our academic performance and our data and our use of our interventions. Are the current interventions that we're using, are they effective, or do we need to reboot interventions and come up with new interventions? So that is the whole purpose of this goal.
Thank you.
The second goal, which is the pink goal, is the community goal, the communication goal. I think we've had a great first year, based on even the feedback from the board and the community, between the positive pride newsletters, the quarterly newsletters, Ms. Fletcher's on social media, just improving the communication, the consistency of communication, if going out to parents on a consistent letterhead, consistent format, et cetera. So what you're going to see this year is a commitment to more of the two-way engagement, so issuing surveys to get input back from the students and parents on large building events, such as registration, residency, course selection, those things, to get input for the staff to make those more effective, more efficient. We also are hosting, as Dr. Freitas already mentioned, but Parent University Series, so that we can educate parents on things that their students and they will be seeing throughout the year. So we had the back-to-school Parent University Series, we used to do this a long time ago, get okay attendance. This year, for the first one, we did it in person, we also had it available on Zoom, we had over 200 attendees, so we felt it was well-attended. So that will be the focus on the communication, we're in the final phases of implementing that website, our new website, and trying to make that more user-friendly, based on all the feedback we heard from the various parent groups and from our students and staff. And then also, we're going to be working with the athletic department, now that we have a new assistant principal of athletics, to try to improve the communication, not only on the recognition and advertising for, of the, of the sports and activities, but also like when there's schedule changes, or there's conflicts, or especially in the spring when there's cancellations. We did hear some feedback from parents, like, you know, they drove all the way to Ridgewood and the game was canceled, and they didn't know, or didn't get updated on social media, got updated on the website, or vice versa. So that's our focus for the communication goal. Dr. Freitas is, kind of serves as our diversity, equity, and inclusion board.
Can I go back on communication, I think, as a board, we've all been very supportive of the communication goal, can we get a, just a calendar of what the Parent University Series is going to look like, for those of us who perhaps no longer have students here?
Dr. Freitas, you sent it to me, I can get that on a Friday update, I know you're still finalizing.
Yeah, some of those, I'm still recruiting staff members and community members, you know, it's in the process.
I just want to kind of get a flavor of it.
The minute I get the information, I'll provide it to our superintendent, of course.
I think it's a great idea, and I'm happy to hear the attendance was, it was well-received for the first one. Were those just freshmen, or was that everybody?
That was, it was open to everybody.
Okay.
Am I right, Kylie told me this morning it was around 200 in person, I don't know if there were more.
Yeah, I mean, that was, it was a good crowd, it was a good crowd.
And then do you record it, so it can be watched?
Yes, yeah, we're, now we just have to upload it, you know, so people kind of have, yeah, we're working on some editing, making sure it's clean.
Okay, so I didn't mean to interrupt anymore on communication from anyone, we'll move on to the, continue engaging in diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Yes, and Dr. Freitas oversees our district equity leadership team, our DELL, and there were some questions submitted, I share those with Dr. Freitas, so if you want to cover the district equity plan, equity action plan, and your goal for this year, and then answer the questions if you could.
Of course, you got it, Dr. Skinkis. So there were a few questions submitted, first one was, can we have an explanation of the strand in the DEI goal, are there separate topical names for each strand, and do the groups create their own goals? So the staff were invited, and then they chose the groups that were persuaded by a colleague, groups created their own goal with the support of Dr. Adubiel and myself. And just to let the board know, Dr. Adubiel, she's an assistant superintendent now at RBSWGO because of her work, so it was tough to get it for this year, but they get two days. I got it for December and for April, so she can continue guiding us as we develop, but she's an assistant soup now, and it's an absolute privilege that I was able to get two days with her, because she has that going on. The five strands are systems, teaching and learning, student voice, professional development of learning, and parent and community as agency. So the first strand, systems, what do they deal with? So they support any district school policies, processes, procedures, initiatives, decision-making, and fiscal responsibility. You know, I know what was big is that the strand team developed, the DEI questions that we ask our candidates to gauge their knowledge of DEI and their support. The teaching and learning strand deals with pedagogy, curriculum, research, instructional approaches, and assessment. So right now, the charge to the group is they're developing curriculum, working on processes and audit, and more importantly, how to close that opportunity gap, as we call it here at RB.
I'm sorry, I'm going to, can you give me that title, it was teaching and learning, what was the first one?
Systems.
Systems, okay.
Systems, yes. Teaching, the third group is student voice, climate, and culture. So you deal with and support anything with student feedback experiences, climate and culture. Mr. Mann, the strand leader, created a student equity leadership team, and with that team, they're going to leverage the student body to see what they need. And I know some of their plan that they have is leveraging opportunity cafeteria to include groups to showcase their talents, et cetera. For professional learning, that strand group, you know, looks at consultants, training, workshop related to DEI, and they share it with the staff, you know. I was personally able to attend leaders of color this summer in June, and the goal this year to get more staff, do them in the fall and the spring session, so they kind of push that. And then lastly, family and community's agency, that's doing work with parents, with community for authentic opportunities, you know, Ms. Fletcher, myself, Mr. Hocken, Mr. Venig, Mr. Mack, you know, a lot of us were able to visit, you know, other schools and see what was going on, and that's where we got the Parent University, from beyond a meeting, this is how we operate, this is how we do things, right, so they can learn and support, you know, so they can, so we can solve any potential issues and just better educate our parents, because if we do that, we're going to be a better school overall. So those are the five systems and some of the topics and items that they support.
Dr. Freitas, you have an administrator on each one of those, correct?
Correct, there's an administrator on all of them, and there's teachers and teachers professional.
Support staff.
Support staff, there's 25 members, and there's five members in each sub-strand, in each of the five groups.
So we were last briefed on this, it was probably about a year ago, as you were going into some of the, developing the strands. Would it be appropriate or helpful to the board if we did more of a deeper dive with what the work has been to date sometime later on this fall? I mean, some of the questions seem to be aligned with that.
I mean, I'm hearing from the blue goal and about achievement gap, and to be honest, I don't think it, how it's housed there. It is truly in building a community through students, teachers, community administrators that is going to have any effect on that achievement gap coming from the DEI or the green, green goal.
And I think some of the, some of the goals, obviously, and we talked about, I mean, they're coming at things from multiple angles, right?
100%, I'm just, as I'm kind of hearing it, I wanted to know the strands, so that I had a sense of where the work's going, but I, yeah, I'd like to hear more.
We also have an equity, a district equity plan or a tab on our website, so Dr. Freitas is going to create a one-pager like we have for the board goals and have the equity action plan up there, so you can see the five strands and what they're working on, and some of the things they're trying to accomplish. So we'll have that as well as, we'll have Dr. Freitas give a more in-depth presentation. I'm thinking September COW, just because October COW is traditionally where the building administration presents on kind of last year's, all the performance data from last year, so I mean, unless I move that up to September and do the DEI in October, but it'll be one of those two months, that's okay.
Now, that works, I think that'd be helpful, I think that was some of the flavor of the discussion, is that we think this is important, it's obviously one of our five goals, but what does it really mean? That, that's, where does the rubber hit the road, so to speak?
Yeah, I think we would be foolish to not incorporate DEI into the first goal and vice versa.
Right, the link is there, obviously, when I look at these, I honestly, I looked at these and I went, all right, pink, purple, and, and orange, we understand what's going on there. I think with the blue, we have a sense of what the intention is, I want to know where our green goal is moving forward, so.
Our DEI goal.
DEI goal.
Just to reiterate.
I'm just going by color, because I don't want to prioritize them, like, I know.
Absolutely, not, you know.
And just to rephrase, you know, our strand team with teaching and learning, they're going to, you know, they're developing a plan within the ACT to try to find opportunities to, you know, to possibly close, right, that opportunity gap, you know.
I would be remiss not to ask about clearinghouse data. I did receive clearinghouse data, however, I just received two numbers. Are we going to further tease out those two numbers to ensure that equity gaps or achievement gaps are not, so that those gaps don't show up in post-secondary enrollment? So I think the information was 80% of students enroll in a two or a four-year, and 20%, we don't know where they go? For me, the initial question, if we're looking at it through the DEI lens, is who are those 20%? And why aren't they going somewhere?
In relation to the clearinghouse data, I talked to an administrator from another school, and it doesn't matter which, but they invested a lot of money into getting deeper into that data, and it's really difficult to get too far down without muddying it, and it, I think it's a conversation to discuss, you've asked for it quite a bit, I think, if we want more information on that depth, I think we probably need to talk to some other districts and see how they're, how they're getting to that depth.
I think if we're going to.
If we want to go that deep, it's a lot.
DEI, for me, is intrinsically tied into where our students are going after they leave RB. And with a school as small as RB, the fact that 20% of them aren't going anywhere, or we don't know where they are, I'm curious to see who they are, right? Because 20% is a lot for a school this size and a school that's rated number, you know, like, it, we would, we would be, we must not to include that into a DEI discussion.
So where would that be placed, what strand would that be placed in? Teaching and learning?
Teaching and learning?
Yeah, yeah.
Or student voice?
Student culture.
Student culture, student voice.
Professional learning, do teachers know?
Really, really across the, really, really across the strands, right, where you need the.
Well, I was going to say, even I think some of this parent university piece, right, because so much of what you do after graduation, we've built on for four years, right, so whether you're selecting a post-secondary school, getting that enrollment, once you choose a school, let's say, the school kind of takes it from there in a lot of ways, like trying to make sure that parents are equipped with the tools to help get to that application process and the selection process, to me, those are strong efforts we can make here while the students are still enrolled.
That would be another good place to include post-secondary information, is in Parent University.
Because we don't have, we used to have a way, and then it was, but like, of that 20%, that could, that could be military, that could be trades.
Could be military, trades, I mean, the general workforce and.
Right, but I'm saying, we, we, maybe the, one of the DEI strands can figure out a way to better start keeping track of that, and fair, I think that's what Ms. Gasp's question has always been, okay, of that 20% or that, you know, which is roughly 80 students.
Right, is the question just four-year, two-year other, or does it?
Right, are they being left behind, or do they have post-secondary plans that we just aren't reporting to the clearinghouse, but we have plans and they have worked on stuff with their counselors?
Correct.
I personally remember filling out the form five years after graduating high school, where am I now, and that kind of thing, and mailing it back to my high school, that doesn't happen anymore, from, not in the same way. There are more informal things than the clearinghouse that some people do. The clearinghouse, I think, is the most like, at least, formalized version of getting that data back, but.
It's a good place to start.
Yeah, I agree with you. I don't know, I think I said this when it was first mentioned, is what does it really tell us, and that's where I got into the conversation about, with another administrator, what are you guys doing to use it, or to make meaning of it other than making guesses on the unknown, so. Whether the clearinghouse is the best place to end up, and it might be, or whether we try to figure out what.
I mean, is there some other survey tool or some type of?
I know somebody who uses LinkedIn at a very, very small scale level and knows everything about those students, but.
I think you start with clearinghouse data, and then you come up with some questions, right, like, hmm, I wonder where they ended up, I wonder if two years, you know, I wonder how we're best-serving students, I wonder if summer melt happens all the time, they leave RB on, in May 20-something, and they're like, this is where I'm going, and then sometime in June, they change their mind because things change, and then students are scrambling because they, like, I got an email over the summer, like, hey, sorry to bother you, I know you don't work at the school, but I'm having a hard time getting my kid's transcript, he changed his mind, and now I don't know what to do, and the parent was panicking, right? And I'm like, no need to panic, we got this, right, so we had to talk him off the ledge, so maybe for Parent University, that would be a good, right, like, my kid graduated, now what? They need to know that they're still supported by the high school, because at the end of the day, the high school holds the transcript, right, so they would need to be in communication with, with the school. So it's just, a lot of things could happen.
Yeah, and I'll share with the board, you know, I don't know how many alums we've assisted at graduate, we're open for service at all times, right, right, they come in, they make an appointment, all right, once a bulldog, always a bulldog is our motto, so we're always here to serve all of our students however best we can.
No, I have no doubt, just, you know, you panic.
Right.
The transcript is due, I don't know what to do.
I think the DEI strands is a good place to start, I think, I think that what we've heard, and maybe there's something you could go back with your team at the building level with the strand teams and discuss, like, not only are we looking to close the achievement gaps on our PSAT and ACT and just academics overall, but like, making sure that we're closing the equity gap so that everybody has exposure and access to post-secondary planning.
Right, like, another question might be, how many of our students, who are our students taking advantage of dual enrollment and dual credit? Who are our students taking advantage of advanced placement? Who are our students that are here currently taking the dual degree program at Triton? Start to see what those trends are, and if we realize that maybe a certain group of students are not taking advantage of it, why? Why are they not taking advantage of it? Do they not know? Do they not see the value in dual credit? Do they not qualify for dual credit because they can't place into a certain class? So I think these types of things would be really good to explore. So I think these types of things would be really good to explore in the, in that goal.
So where does that leave us with today's SMART goal? I mean, I think there's some things you can come back and work on, but I think what, the specific stuff wouldn't necessarily be in these SMART goals, but it more in the individual strands goals. So I think I need to see if I can, maybe we push Dr. Freitas to November or after October. I'm just trying to think, you're going to need time to sit and meet with your strand team. It's not going to be the first few weeks of the opening of school. You're going to first pull them out of their classes in September, October, to start laying out what are we doing to specifically address some of the feedback you heard tonight.
Can we move the October presentation to September?
I'm gonna see if I can move that to September. But I gotta make sure I have all the data and everybody can attend.
Okay.
Well, I think what we're trying to hear is how the strand integrates into all of the other goals and action steps. I mean, that, that's the end of the day, right? So don't, don't be standalone, don't be an island of DEI. How do you take the goals and translate?
One piece we discussed this morning in, in Dr. Freitas, and that's why you mentioned that there was an administrative, each strand should still be working with, over the overall compass of the mission statement that the board recreated.
Right.
With the community event, when they set these goals and they reset the mission statement, as well as under the general goals of the board, right? Students first, making sure equity, you know, resources and interventions and...
Anything else on that one? Or should we move on to, is it purple, lilac?
Finance?
Finance? Why is it not in green? That's really the question.
It's a good question, we could have did that. Dr. Smetana, do you want to touch on this?
Sure, so the SMART goal this year is to finance the capital projects that approved by the board, while continually ensuring the resources are committed to programs directly affecting student outcomes, and then monitoring the expenditures to make sure that we are at or below the approved budget levels. So some of the action steps include overseeing the issuance of the non-taxable working cash bonds for capital projects, tracking expenditures for the capital projects and solar panels, and the culinary lab to keep within the approved budgets. And then compile a list of the additional resources, like I previously mentioned, like paying for the additional SAT test is, is an example that can affect student outcomes, and then monitoring the budget, which I do every month and provide an update, but then also monitoring towards the end of the year, providing the board a cumulative report as to where we are in terms of the expenditures in comparison to the budget.
So, so on this one, I know we had some, some prior discussion, this is not really in, directly in Dr. Smetana's financial worldview, but we talked about reviewing curriculum and how potential changes to curriculum ultimately impact not just FTE, but also opportunities. So would that, is this the right place to include something along those lines in those, as an action step? Does my, does my question make any sense?
Elaborate a little bit. We had talked, like, are you, like, are you suggesting, like, we, we talked about...
We talked about reviewing the curriculum guide to make sure that we're not... Make sure that classes are not included in the curriculum guide that are no longer running with any regularity. I know there were, there were a couple here and there that we had some discussion on the last six months. I think we talked about what makes a class an honors class versus a standard class, and how that is differentiated between an honors and a non-honors class. And those, looking at those things, it's not a short-term project, it's obviously a long-term project, because this is, the curriculum guide is such the backbone of, of what we do. But I think that work has to fit in here somewhere and be accounted for. And I think this is where it belongs, because those, that review and those decisions ultimately impact finances.
That curriculum guide part was, there was a statement by, I think, Ms. Lindquist about the fact that they can't pull some of those out of the curriculum guide because of, I don't know if that fits.
Well, then that wasn't the guide, that was, like, in the old school.
Because you could pull them off the sheet so that parents aren't seeing classes.
Which then could fall under communication.
Right, so, so that's kind of an offshoot of it, it's more, that's more of a bureaucratic cleanse that needs to take place. I think it was more that, you know, as we look at which classes are full-year classes, which youth classes are partial-year classes? Should, you know, combining honors French and French, how does that work? I think we talked about looking at all of those areas, and I view it as a curriculum guide exploration, but maybe someone views it in a different way.
Well, I mean, it does make, I mean, we talked about, we kind of modified in the fourth quarter some of the staffing related to music. We, after visiting with LT and Mr. Baum recommended, like, okay, maybe it's better for us to split into two jazz classes and run the one music, the band class, over, slightly over 40, so that we could split into honors and regular, like, that's an example of assignment of resources in FTE.
That was kind of an ad hoc, and it came after a lot, a lot of debate.
So you're suggesting to kind of do this, do this goal?
I, I thought, the last time we met with Ms. Lindquist, it was, you know, it's a living document. The curriculum guide is, is always, and there's always things in process of being developed, there's things that are moving off of the curriculum guide. How we view each of those classes, whether it's titles, right? There's titles that are now obsolete, or some changes that were made. We went from, you know, European to world history, some of those type of changes. Those are all important reviews to be done, and I think identifying it as a, a, a specific action step, I think, helps elevate its importance, and it's not something that we would side of.
It definitely ties back into the overall financing, because a, let's say, 85 to 90% of our budget is in the education fund, and it's teaching, staffing, and resources for education, it's where we're a school, so.
Perhaps we could talk as a team about what is realistic to accomplish this year, because if it's strictly cleaning up the curriculum guide, Mrs. Locke had suggested that, that would probably fall more under communications. So perhaps it makes sense to figure out as a building team, like, what, right, out of all, out of everything that was discussed tonight in that area, what can be accomplished? And then figure out for next year, maybe what bucket it falls, because it falls under so many, right? It falls under the blue curriculum.
It could fall under teaching and learning and the equity and DEI.
Right, it falls under a lot, depending on which, which avenue you're going to be able to accomplish.
But does everyone agree that's an area we had talked about, putting some, some level of effort towards, right? I think it's, I, I don't want it to go without a level of review and some feedback from Ms. Lindquist on how we view this document moving forward. And so I, I agree with that approach to say, what's practical before we get the curriculum guide in, in the fall sometime, right? We'll get it, we'll get a version of it, and then part of that discussion should be, here's where we see this document moving, you know? Whether it's assessing other districts and how they're handling some of the, the fine arts classes or, or whatever, let's talk through it over, over a period of time.
Could the achievement gap also influence the curriculum guide?
It may.
It should.
Right.
So can we put that under, I get that it's financed because it's money, but if we want to take a more holistic approach, we should definitely look at the curriculum guide that through DEI.
I think all the goals are holistic, though, they all overlap in many different ways. So you try and focus, but then recognize that you might have to pull other pieces in. But where is it going to live mainly, I think, is...
Well, because...
Right, and I'm just providing you guys with my thought process on where I think the curriculum guide should be housed.
So you're saying blue?
I would say greens.
She's saying under green, and I also think it could, it could go hand in hand with the financial side of this. Like, the last one is monitoring expenditures throughout the year to ensure June 30th actuals are at or below the board-approved budget level. I mean, that is one of our performance objectives, and, and so I think if we were going to replace that last action step, it could tie in with what they're doing in, in the, whether it's in the DEI, teaching and learning, with the curriculum guide, just to where Dr. Smetana can assist that group in looking at... There has to be, there's a finance, right? You can come back and they're going to look at the curriculum guide, come back and go, hey, listen, we should run 26 different sections in order to, right? Well, okay, this board has had, had multiple discussions, like, if we're going to change, you know, so like, there is a financial, direct financial impact when you start looking at classes and offerings and things like that. So I think there is a point to where the, the finance can also work with, whether it's the DEI group or just the general administration in the, right? But we should maybe put one thing on there as a place to start.
So I, I do think that last item under the financial, I, I hear what you're saying, Loretta, that, you know, how do we force the, how do we eliminate any silos from these goals? I mean, that's, that's really the, the focus. This one, I mean, this is really a, this is a, this is the board's fiduciary responsibility right there, right? How are we budget to actuals? It probably doesn't need to be a standalone task. We should, should be reviewing it, we should be looking at the documents, we should be asking questions. So having this be a, I guess, I, I would agree that the administration should tell us what is manageable in '24, '25 for a goal, as it relates to reviewing the offerings to our students.
Maybe it's something as simple, and I mean, Dr. Smetana and I work on the last action step at our cabinet, our weekly cabinet meetings. Maybe we can figure out where we at least lay out a plan for the next, how this is going to look or work, and, and could have a direct impact on staffing, finances, resources, right? Because I, again, these will all overlap, ACT transition, right? So they come to the board, or they should say, they came to Kristen and I at, our AdCom meeting, or like, we'd like to do, Dr. Freitas was like, we'd like to do a spring SAT. We'd also like to do a fall practice ACT. Okay, so we found, we put the $40,000 in the budget, talked about, okay, we're not going to close school another day. Like, we had to go through all the ripple effect across the different operational, right? So I think if we can do something similar, like, as they start to talk about the NTSS and the interventions, maybe there's, maybe the cap class, maybe there's a different class that's going to help close the achievement gap, that then is directly tied to the curriculum guide and the removal of some classes or the classification of some classes. So I think there's, this is a, this is a Pandora box kind of one, so we got to, I think, one of the first action steps might be just laying out a plan of how we do this over the next two years, or over the next year, you know what I'm saying? I know that's...
Yeah, ultimately, I think the goals are, are a good solid base, and I'll, we're kind of leaving it to you. Tell us where it's coming back to, to meet. Yes, it matters where it's housed, but only insofar as we end up achieving the goal, or understanding what's attainable within that.
And these are not finite, right? There's a lot of other things that occur that are not... I mean, I'm looking at the orange one already, and, you know, the, the action steps are really limited to the zoo relationship, but it's many other things, right? It's the fact that we now have a dining area for students out front, I think is a fabulous addition, right? And it gets people a chance to sit outside, and I see students congregating there all the time. That, that was a very nice improvement to the campus that really falls under that orange goal.
I call it peach.
But it's not a big, it's not a big improvement, like, hey, we fixed our problem running fields or transporting kids off campus to practice freshman soccer, right? But yes, you're right, it is still a facility improvement that...
Or, you know, when we work with Aramark, and they are extremely flexible in how they provide services, that's something that happens in a course of business, and because you've developed relationships, not specific here. So I say all that to say, this should not be viewed as a comprehensive list, right?
Right. Let us work on that final action step, but overall, the goal is, in general, is okay, and SMART goal, well, Kristen and I will work on that action step under that goal that we'll reach across, okay? And the last one, obviously, you know, again, it's extending the footprint, so like, you know, thank you to President Sales for mentioning all the things that we're doing. But again, the goal was to try to increase our footprint for extracurricular and curricular utilization. So you have seen that there was a new master plan release called the Century Plan. I have been doing some informal conversations with the zoo throughout the last year, just to see how our intentions and our needs could possibly work with our neighbor as they develop their plan. I do think they have included our input. We hosted a feedback session here for community members to talk about our needs, as well as some of their master plan questions. I'm scheduled to meet with them near the end of the month, so I will keep the board up to date, and hopefully, as those conversations evolve into something more concrete, I can then put together an action plan for you. And that's really what that second action step would be, based on those discussions, I could give you kind of a next step, actual layout of how that would look.
Any more questions or comments from anyone on these? I think we, I think to your point, we, we have seen these a couple times, this is probably our longest discussion about it, but we've all had a chance to raise questions and talk about them with you independently, so I appreciate that. And we'll be hearing the updates as the year goes on in each.
Good.
Visitor statements. Is anyone here for visitor statements this evening? Ms. White? Let me read our introductory paragraph. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in a meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent.
Thank you. Hi, Maggie White from Riverside. I wanted to, to comment on the discussion regarding the curriculum guide. I do remember that discussion. Some of the remarks were around, you know, there was conversation about saving a teacher. But I think, you know, we expanded that to how, how do we save a program, not a teacher? How do we provide a more programmatic experience for kids coming through? We have, you know, CTE-type things, so very formal paths for someone who wants to pursue a culinary, you know, certificate, for example. There can also be sort of informal paths. Do you want to, you know, go into a more fine arts path? So how can we take that raw curriculum guide and maybe put a lens of, here's a pathway if you want to do this? Here's a pathway if you want a culinary certificate. Here's a path if you just want to take, you know, some cooking classes to have a brain break throughout your academic day. So, so I'm really excited to hear, you know, the re-engagement of that discussion, and hope that that contributes to some of the thinking there. I did also want to speak regarding the goals. I submitted a FOIA request around, I was just thinking, like, how do we come to these district goals? How, was there community input? How did, how did you ever come up with these? And maybe some of this was done before it was really a part of the district. But, so the response was to go look through board agendas and minutes, which I did, and I found goal documents going back from 2022. You know, so looking at the pink goal, the two-way communication goal, I would say, okay, I looked at like 2022, for example, going back through the agenda. A lot of steps around survey tools, there are multiple action steps around that. I don't remember receiving a survey. I couldn't find any records on, like, survey results, so I don't know if those were published or not. But so, you know, what were some of those inputs? The 2023 goals around hiring the PR person, I agree, Kylie is amazing, has done amazing work, and I feel, you know, very informed. I think the district continues to do a good job around one-way communication. As I look through the goals for this year, I'm still seeing a lot of emphasis on one-way communication. I'm seeing a little bit, there's something around surveys to stakeholders to improve school-wide events and processes. But what I'm not really seeing is engaging feedback from the community on some of those higher-level directional things. What is the balance of, you know, CTE programs, the foreign language, like, where are we going as a community, not just sort of the day-to-day things of the school? So that's sort of, you know, hopefully, for consideration as you discuss these goals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Meg.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, okay, thank you. Any additional discussion items from members of the Board of Education? Seeing none. Consent agenda, we do have at least one item on there. Ms. Gasko?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on July 9, 2024, open and closed, as presented in the August 13, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Van Hurst, and we do need a roll call. I guess, I'm sorry, I apologize. All in favor, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Old business, we do have, we don't have any new life safety, capital improvements.
I think we covered those pretty thoroughly tonight.
Same with tentative budget, we do have matters, though, do you want to talk to the tentative budget again?
We do.
I think you covered it.
Well, you wanted to point out one thing, correct? Or do you want to show them what the actuals, where we're at now?
I thought that was in your report.
A lot of it is, a lot of it was repeated from the report, so I can briefly provide an update.
No, I want to show page...
Has it changed in the stipends? Is that...
No, I wanted to show...
There were, but, well, I understand where you're...
Your summary page, you know where I'm going with this.
Yes, but I will give a brief overview first. So, since the last board meeting, I provided the June 30th actuals from fiscal year '24. So, I was able to update individual line items based off of where those items came in. I was able to review our current special education revenue and expenditure needs with our Director of Special Education. EBF state funding was released. I was guessing that we would stay tier one, and we would get around $300,000, and we were pretty close to that, so there wasn't a huge change there.
But we did stay tier one.
Correct.
Correct. As Dr. Skinkis alluded, the current projected deficit for this year is $1,066,637 due to the solar panel project, which is currently budgeted for 1.5 million. So, if I can solidify kind of where we're at, I can adjust the budget a little bit between now and the board approving it in September. But this deficit is offset from last year's unexpected surplus from receiving all that additional revenue last year. Additionally, what Dr. Skinkis wanted me to point out is, highlighted in the executive summary, is showing where the working cash bonds would come in and out should the board choose to issue them at the next board meeting. So, that's on page 118 of Board Book. You can see the money would come in into revenue as $2 million in Fund 70 and working cash, I've highlighted that, and then it goes out as an expenditure because then we're transferring that to Fund 60. And so, Dr. Skinkis just wanted me to highlight where kind of all that would flow through. And then, at the bottom of this page, I updated where the projected fund balances would be, so was able to update those. So, assuming we hit the budget exactly as outlined on this paper document, which never happens, right? This is just a guideline for us, and we try to get as close as possible. At the end of this fiscal year, without the 2 million, 2.9 million in working cash that we previously set aside for land acquisition or land development, we would be at a project, we would be at a fund balance of 54.47%.
I thought it was important to share the executive summary with the board because when you heard the June 30th report from Dr. Smetana, said our, we had a million-dollar surplus, putting this at seven and a half months, but really, when we were with the deficit, and then if you take out the 2 million, we're really sitting at about six, six and a half months, right? Also, I think it's important for the community here, we have received, I have received one or two questions in public or in passing about the solar panels, and do we really think we're going to get the return? And here's the other thing I would say, between the working cash bonds and still being able to do a tax decrease for our community members over the next five years, and put that program in for, for students, and you just sort of visitor comment about career pathways, but putting that program in. And on top of that, we had a million-dollar surplus last year, which almost covers 100% of the solar panels this year. So, like, we really are doing a lot of this stuff cost-neutral for the district, and I think that's important. So, I just wanted to make sure we have some of that on the record, and you actually can hear what Dr. Smetana just explained, as well as having the document to reference as people for the next month before we approve the budget in September, when they go back and look at the, these documents.
So, on that, on that same line of thinking, we should have a revenue assumption related to the solar refund? Or do we not anticipate that?
The solar refund won't hit the same fiscal year.
It won't? Okay. I wasn't sure when exactly that was able to...
Yeah, that will hit the following fiscal year.
Okay. And this does include the, obviously, the collective bargaining agreement that we just amended? So, I wanted to...
Right.
Make sure that was reflected here in a, in a positive way.
This is, this, although Kristen gave this a summary in her report, you know, the first three or four pages are important for the board to look at because this is pretty much the budget you're going to be approving in September. We'll make some adjustments when we get the RFP for solar panels, if there's any other final modifications that come from the building staff here in the next 30 days. It's also good for our student advisors, this is where all the money goes to fund the programs and things like that, so I just wanted to make sure, though, that we got that on, on TV tonight. We're doing a lot of these projects cost-neutral, so there was some concern from some people that...
And not only that, they're socially responsible.
Yeah.
So, there's, it's more than, it is cost-neutral, and it's a step toward the right behaviors so that we are all, I put my Tom Jacobs hat on and...
You're channeling your Tom Jacobs.
I do have one clarifying question.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing all of this out. Did we settle then on the 2 million bond amount?
It'll be...
Will that be changed because we now have the $1 million?
It comes out to be like 2050 or whatever, that's to cover the, it will pretty much cover the entire cost of the culinary lab. And then we will, what we'll do is pay that off over a year, and it will still decrease tax payments over the next five years instead of there being a big drop-off this year in tax payment and then a spike next year. Remember, if you think about Liz's presentation...
Are you asking, we talked about 3 million in bonds at one point.
Right. Sure.
The hearing tonight was only for the two to basically cover the cost of the kitchen and a little bit of the...
So, it was originally three, but because we got the $1 million...
Right, we're settling on two.
Okay, perfect. I just needed to clarify this number.
We're settling on two, and that's why it's also in here under 70, and it's highlighted, and then we'll eventually transfer it.
That's also good to get on record. Thank you.
Okay. Any more budget comments, questions?
I would say the only big item that is not, that was not released yet, when I finalized this for the board meeting tonight, was CP-PRT on the revenue side, but actually with a conservative approach. So, the estimate usually gets released in August, and as of August 8, it wasn't, I couldn't find it yet for this coming year. So, we do anticipate it dropping, and that's already reflected in the budget, but usually we get an actual dollar amount, and I hadn't received that by the time of this...
And that flows through the treasurer as well?
Correct.
Correct.
So, that's an even better reason why...
It's, it's close to $1 million.
No, not anymore.
We're budgeting, now we're going to, we're budgeting 656, but last year we got 840, so I mean, it's still, it's a significant revenue source.
Correct, right. So, that's why I wanted to highlight it, because that's the only, like, real unknown.
softer number? Okay. Any other budget questions or comments? And we will vote to approve at the next meeting then, or September meeting, I should say. Press Plus Policy, 115.
As I touched on, again, it was a smaller packet. Ms. Locke and Ms. Gasko are part of that advisory council, but the majority of it was legal reference updates, date changes. We had only one internal change, and that was where it says superintendent. We also added, to be consistent, superintendent or designate, but there were no significant policy measures. This was press packet, 115. 116 got sent to me early last week, so I haven't even started to review that, so I would anticipate we'll see that this fall, and it has to be approved before January 1.
Do we have a motion?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves Press Plus Policy Issue 115 as presented in the August 13, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a need a new activity account for the class of 2028.
Wait, didn't you pay the bills?
Oh, can't we talk about the activity account first? It's more exciting. Like, I can't believe they're the class of 28, but let's pay the bills first. That's, were there any questions?
No questions.
Okay, then.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the August 13, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second from Ms. Locke, and we do need a roll call.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gieska?
Yes.
And Ms. Seawright.
Yes. And someone else want to talk about the activity account for 2028?
I'm excited.
Thank you. It is. It's, it's a, it's a big deal that they're starting their high school career.
This is just an annual request to create a new activity account for the new freshman class. They hold fundraisers, freshman and sophomore junior year, to help pay for prom, so we'd ask that the board approve this tonight so we can get it set up.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the activity account for the class of 2028 as presented in the August 13, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Van Horst, and we do need a roll call.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gieska?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
And Ms. Seawright.
Yes. We don't have anyone remaining for visitor statements. Discussion items, none were requested. Do we have any consideration of items for future meeting? Any topics from anyone?
Not seeing any. We do have some matters for closed session.